Model UN fees. Is there any additional information?
This is a program that's been going on for Lebanon High School, which is students are very excited to participate. Their advisor wrote the grant to the Dorothy Byrne Foundation, and I'd like to thank them for the donation.
Is there any comment in the room? Is there any comment online?
There is no comment online.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at 6:30. So I'll like to call the regular board meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and word so that it can be included in the minutes. And please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy BEDH. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
There's just one correction on committee updates 12H, the School District City Task Force. That is going to be both board meeting. You guys have should have received an invitation today, an updated one on October 1st at 5:30. It's scheduled to go to 5:30 to 6:45 at the chambers at City Hall.
Okay, and also, we're going to move items under new business A and B. We're going to move those to before the SAU leadership team update under eight, eight A and B. So we need, is public comment, is there any public comment in the room? None, is there any online?
There's no public comment online.
Okay, we will reopen public comment later. And our student report, I do not see our student, and they did not.
I did not receive a report from our student.
Check in on that. Correspondence?
There's no correspondence.
Okay, great, which means we are at the consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the non-public minutes from September 10th, 2025.
Motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes, September 10th, 2025.
Motion by John.
Seconded.
Second by Richard. Are there any corrections, changes?
I have one correction.
Okay, perfect.
There's an extra L in my name. It should be C-A-S-T-E-L-O-T.
Oh.
So just the first L.
Okay.
That's it.
Was that non-public?
Yeah, non-public.
All right, fine. Perfect. Any other corrections? All right, all those in favor of accepting the non-public meeting minutes from September 10th. Yes, great. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing on September 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th public hearing minute.
A motion by John, can I get a second?
Guys, I should have abstained from that vote.
Oh.
I was not present.
During the, during the non-public?
I'm sorry.
I don't think I was.
No, you were on Zoom.
I wasn't.
Yeah.
Was I on Zoom for the non-public?
I don't remember you being there at all.
Yeah, you weren't there. I don't think you were there. Okay, that's good. So we have one abstention. So the vote for the non-public meeting minutes is one, two, three, four, five, seven, vote yes, and one abstention. Okay, moving on to the public hearing minutes. We have a motion to approve and a second by Tia, did you second? Second by Tia. Are there any comments on the public hearing minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Any abstentions? All right, and then we need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on September 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th school board minutes.
All right, motion by John, second by Tia. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes?
Under seven C, the LMS presentation, Autumn actually wasn't present. She was referenced, but she was not.
Right. And I believe we need to correct that on the staff present. They are too, she's listed as present.
Okay, perfect. Great, any other correction? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the full board meeting minutes as amended?
Seven, are you?
Good, great. Any abstentions? Okay, so one abstention, Richard, in all cases. All right, keep going. Okay, so we are going to move directly to the presentations by the elementary schools. We'll start with MLS because they're first on our agenda.
You both can come up if you want.
But you both can come up together, it's totally fine.
I just wanted to let the board know, the class size reports will be included in my presentation after, so I did not have them duplicate it in their presentation this evening.
You have to press the button, press the button. There you go.
There you go. We have to turn it on, it looks new. Is this new? New and updated. Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Roach, the principal at Mount Lebanon School, and we're going to talk about our, this is like in my face, our school goals and kind of what we're going to work on this year. So who, yep, great. We have, you have the enrollment, let me get to that page. Well, I can just talk to you about it. The first one is we're going to increase, you can see our goal number one. A group of us went to a project-based learning conference this summer, and we surveyed the staff about like what we want to work on, and we do want to do more project, more project-based learning-centered strategies. It doesn't necessarily mean that every single grade will do a project-based learning full activity, but we are definitely dipping our toes then. And because we do a lot of project-based, we're pretty, because we're in the elementary school, but we're going to focus more on it and try to make sure that every grade and every class gets an opportunity for some project-based learning, project activity experience, and then we will share it with the community, either through different grade levels and also through our celebration of learning at the end of the year, which you are all invited to attend. Focus number two, we are all, all grades are implementing arts and letters. We meet, they're doing three different modules in arts and letters. We meet weekly to discuss kind of the alignment with the different grade levels and making sure we're all stay kind of in a similar location. Some classes move a little bit quicker than others, but not really, they're pretty much within a couple lessons. And the district has done a nice job providing all the books for the kids, so we have lots of new books and lots of resources for kids. So that's two. I could read the whole goal, but I think you guys can read it, so I'm not.
I think it's important too, Katie, just to kind of state that in here, and it's in your packet though. Last year was a pilot year, so not everyone was implementing art letters.
Oh, it's true.
So you are going to ask for 100% implementation.
Oh, that's extremely true. I guess I should have said that. Last year we piloted Fish Tank, and we, and not all of our teachers piloted Fish Tank, but a large portion of them did. And then in the spring, when the ELA committee decided to go with the Arts and Letters program, a couple of Mount Leb teachers piloted the Arts and Letters, but not all of them. And this year, every single class is doing it. So like, it's not really, it's a pilot, but it's, we're all doing, all classes, kindergarten through fourth grade are doing it. So we are doing lots of observations, we are working together to, to just make sure we're aligned and creating good experiences for kids. And a couple of the project-based learning initiatives will be coming out of the programs from Arts and Letters, like a specific unit. So that's cool to see. Okay. Responsive classroom, as you guys have all probably seen on Mount Leb's website, we have been a blend of PBIS and responsive classroom. However, we've had, since we originally did that training, a lot of our staff has moved on, so we asked to do an updated training so we could all be on the same page. And so we had some trainers come out last year, and this is something the staff wanted to just kind of get some updated training on. And we decided we also want to focus on the closing circle, so at the beginning of the year, we looked at our schedule to make sure we had enough time, both at the beginning of the day to do our morning meeting, and then at the end of the day, to make sure we have at least 15, 10 to 15 minutes before the end of the day to do a closing circle. And I will say, and so we're implementing that K, also K through four, and I will say the feedback, we just talked about it at our last staff meeting, they're really noticing a difference with adding the closing circle. It's been really nice. And to try to help, just give teachers more ideas and what to do for their morning meeting and in closing circles, we're going to be doing some peer observations of, of the responsive classroom meetings, because there's four parts to it, and just getting teachers in to visit other classrooms. And then at staff meetings, we're going to be practicing with the whole staff, because it's fun to like, we'll close our meeting with a closing circle. So that's something we're going to keep working on. Yep. And then I just, I wrote this up because I wanted you guys to see the other things we're focusing on at Mount Leb this year. We have, as you guys all know, thank you for adopting UFLY, it's actually been a game changer at our school. We really, really like it, and we've seen a lot of, you guys saw the data last year, and I think we can expect to continue to see really positive data from teaching the foundational skills. And for to track UFLY last year, we just found some different tracking forms that we would use. And this year, UFLY worked with this company called Project Read and kind of came up with a program that allowed us to track the data a little bit better and figure out what intervention groups needed to happen, and then also help, it helps make some like different games for, to send home for kids if they need it. So we are working on implementing that. I've been meeting with grade levels this week and starting to plug in some of the assessments, because every week, kids doing like a quick check to see where they are with their skill development. So that's something we're working on. As you guys all know, we have a new evaluation system that we're all learning. Then we are also, I'm supporting the teachers with the new vector PD tracking system, which it was very different than the frontline, so that's been a new learning curve for them. And I would say probably a bigger learning curve for administration, we're trying to figure out what are all the different places we're supposed to be checking. We are, I've started hosting a coffee with the principal that will start October 7th. You guys are welcome to come if you want to come. And you probably saw the flyer in my newsletter. I continuing to send out my newsletters at least twice a month, and sometimes I have to have like a special Lions update if I need to remind families of something. We are doing lots of events through the PTO. If you're available this Saturday, we have our first ever Fall Fest and just different family engagement activities. And we have a really nice PTO group that meets once a month in the evening. We're expanding our social-emotional learning curriculum at Mount Leb. We're using the Miss Kendra and grades kindergarten and first grade this year, so that's just a little bit more increased, which we like. And we also have, I thank you guys for supporting the, our budget, because we also have our Michelle Belk comes once a week, which that's just social-emotional and helping. We have, we really appreciated that extra support from her for having a mental health caseworker once a week. And then Ms. Bailey, the assistant principal, is wants to tackle a production of a school play this year, so we, I'm going to support her in doing that. It's going to probably look a little bit different than Hanover Streets, because it's our first year, but we're really excited, and Elizabeth is working on the calendar, and we're, it's just going to look a little different, and that it'll probably, we'll see what it looks like. I'll give you guys an update. I don't even want to say what the play is, because I know Elizabeth's working on the details in the, in the background, but it's a, it's a tall ask, and I'm excited that she wants to do it. So I'll be supporting her. Any questions?
Yeah, so let's, we'll pause and do Mount Leb. Do you guys have any comments or questions about their goals?
I have a question.
Sure.
I wonder if you can tell me what the vector PD tracking system means?
Oh, yes. So we use, my favorite system, and it's, it's vector is what the district has adopted, I would like to say, to, we used to use frontline, and it was a little kind of, I don't want to call it clunky, but maybe that's a good word for it. So it's a different way to both track teachers' professional development, staff's professional development. We're also tracking on there, it aligns with the, with the Danielson, and then when you do your observations, it's aligned on there, but it also like tracks your PD, and then you have to sign it in different places, that's what it is. And then it also goes along with your hours, your, for your recertification.
I'm going to say this, and you can tell me if this is true or false.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is just a really helpful tool to track?
Professional.
Professional development for the staff.
Okay. It's great, yes.
Great, thank you.
Well said. Yep.
Is there a question? I have a couple.
Sure.
So on goal number one, so you're striving to complete at least one student or class-driven project-based learning experience. So I guess my question would be, like, when you, you said some of the, some of your activities are already project-based, right?
Well, a lot of them are.
Right, many are project-based. So is this in addition to what is already happening in classrooms, or is this counting what is already going on, and then other people who aren't doing these things are going to add them in?
So it's looking at our, some of our current projects that we're, that we do, experiences that we do, and I'm going to use the dimmer switch. I don't know if Mr. Harkins used it last week with you guys, we were at the training together. And just like, what can you add that would be a little bit more student-driven? So on some of those projects, and then some of our teachers are, are going to do the whole thing, the whole project-based learning platform from the beginning to the end. They picked a project, so.
Okay.
So it's like a little bit of both, and then encouraging some, some teachers to dip their, like, look at maybe, look at what they're teaching, look at either a science unit or a math unit, or like, for instance, I just sent kindergarten, just yesterday or today, an article or a project-based learning for math, like what you could do to have like a flower garden. So I'm just kind of like trying to, to add things to their repertoire.
So I would, that sounds great. I would say the thing that I would recommend is that you, because you're going to have to come back and talk to us about like, what progress have you made on this?
Yeah, it'd be great.
It would be great to be able to say specifically, right, like, these classes turned up the dimmer switch, these, these classes, you know, implemented new things, so like, we increased by whatever, just that would be helpful to sort of get a sense of where we were, so that we can know going forward.
Great, I can definitely do that.
And then in goal number two, which is actually, Amy clarified this, so I don't even have to ask this question again, but my clarification was, is this 100% adoption? Yes, so that's what we're doing, is 100% adoption.
100%.
Quote-unquote pilot. And then the last one, for goal number three, I really like the idea of the closing circles. I think just for this goal, if you want to kind of pump up the, the language of what you're saying here, because for instance, you don't really even mention that there's, that these are peer classroom observations, it just says classroom observations. So the fact that it's peer observations is different than if it's administrative observations, and that's, I think, reflective, like you should sort of specify what you're talking about, how often those are happening, when you come back to report.
I think I wrote on there, Lil, that how often the.
In trimester, right.
Yeah, I did write that.
And then the classroom observations is the thing. I say pure reflections.
It's just, yeah, it's pure, yeah.
That's fine, this, and that you're doing staff meetings, you sort of didn't mention that here. So like, these things are all great, you have to include them here, but when you go forward and you come back and say, this is what we did, that would be helpful to just sort of highlight all of those things, because I think those things are new and different, and we want to see, did it work? Does it?
Does it, you mean, do you want to see if having it as a goal in responsive classroom is working, or what are you wanting to see is working?
No, if having, if the closing circles and the staff meeting practices and the peer observations, like, how did that go? How, how have all those things helped this goal be fulfilled?
Help kids have more social-emotional, okay.
Yeah, that's just.
I mean, I think that's a hard thing to measure.
It is a hard thing.
So I will do our best.
And I think that's the issue, right? Qualitative things are difficult to measure, but if we don't attempt to measure them, then we just have qualitative things. So we just sort of push ourselves to like, get a little bit quantitative if we can, whenever we can.
Okay, we can do that.
Katie, you can also maybe, as you engage these practices, have teachers self-reflect in the beginning and at the end, you know, were they helpful?
Yeah.
Like, what did they see at the end of the year after implementing the closing circles and things like that?
Yeah, maybe we'll do a quick survey.
Yeah, like a pre and post, things like that.
Yeah, perfect, that works.
I agree with Lil too, all that exciting stuff that you're doing to build your social-emotional, I think it's more just about to highlight and celebrate.
Right.
Because it really kind of builds into that strategic plan, what we're doing.
Great, sounds good. Any other question? Yeah.
Thank you for this. So I had mostly just clarifications or trying to make sure, we get a lot of language that I feel like is very familiar to educators, but to parents, it is sometime, at least to me individually, it is often less familiar, and I know like some of the stuff that comes home from kids, and it, I'm just trying to make sure I know where all the language is sitting.
Uh huh.
So for the first goal, when we talk about the project-based learning experience, can you just give me an example at the elementary level? Like, what's an example of project-based learning at the elementary level?
Yes, I can give you a second grade one, and I, I could give you one that I'm, okay, I'll give you one that's happening right now. A first grade class is been studying the life cycle of the butterfly and habitats. So they've grown these, or they had, they didn't grow their caterpillars, but they acquired caterpillars, and they raised them, and two crested lizards, and they're learning the life cycle. And they've been, so this is the beginning of their project, and they've released them. And then they realized, and they've been studying about what they need in milkweed, and they've been looking for milkweed all over the school. And we don't have a lot of milkweed anymore, because it got all taken down. So they've been doing a lot of research, so they came up with a question, and they wrote me a letter, and it's, it's posted in my office, it's really cute, and they colored it all with butterflies. And they wrote me a letter to ask me if they were allowed to, and it was the kids writing it all together, if they could plant milkweed, either in a certain area of the school. And I said, I'm okay with it, but you should ask Mr. Tony, because he would tell you the best place to plant our milkweed. So then they invited Mr. Tony, who's our custodian, into their morning meeting, and they went on a tour of the school to figure out where to plant their milkweed. And, and so they came up with a project of what they want to do, now they're figuring out how to get the milkweed seeds, where do they, so they're studying that, and then they'll, they also have learned that it's, you don't, it's going to freeze soon, so they're going to decorate rocks, just so they know where they planted their milkweed. And so they're learning all about this. So that's an example. Another, I just want to give you one more example, because it's great, and it was jobs in the community. In second grade, last year, a class did jobs in the community, and they, the kids explored all the different kinds of jobs that are in Lebanon that you can have. And then they invited different guest speakers to come in, they talked about it, and then the kids decided what job they would want to be in the community, and would tell, and learned all about this job, and then they dressed up as a job, and they invited families to come in and see their posters, and they had to present like why it would be important to be a police officer. So that one is something that happened last year, that we're going to be upping the dimmer switch on. Like, what else can we do as a reflection writing piece at the end of it, something?
Okay, great.
So those are some examples.
That's great, that's super helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Goal number two, implementing arts and letters. My under, my memory and understanding is arts and letters stuff is, that's the change that we've been moving back towards more phonics-based, no?
Okay, so it's a two, it's two, it's a twofold. So the UFLY is, that's the one that I'm really excited about, this tracking system, it's, it's great. Karen's going to want to stand for me?
Oh, fair enough.
She's like, is Katie going to say her?
Sorry, I realize this is one of the ones that I'm like, I know we learned about all this stuff.
There are so many programs. The UFLY program for the K1 and 2, and then Spelography for 3 and 4, that's the foundational skills. But then along with that is an ELA program, which we used to use ARC, American Reading Company, and there were all the different reading books. And this, we have implemented arts and letters for that, for more of, more of the language building content ELA.
Oh, right, this is the, this is more the content stuff.
Content, yeah. So if you think of the rope, it's the content part.
Thank you, okay, great. And then responsive classroom, never mind, I don't have any questions. That one, great, thank you.
Okay, great. Any?
I have a question about the coffee with the principal. Is this kind of a new program, or what are some of the previous kind of Mount Leb outreach, and what is kind of the hopes and goals with the community building for these?
Well, so when I first started here, I was the assistant principal, and that was 11 years ago now, I can't believe it, just cannot believe it's that long, I keep saying that. So the principal that I worked with at the time, Eloise Gunti, she had a coffee with the principal, and it, it was just a time where parents could come in and ask questions and see, talk about what's going on with the school. It's probably not a great time to talk about individual students, because hopefully I'll have more than a couple of parents there, and just to kind of get a feel and ask me any questions about kind of what we're seeing. And I kind of feel like my PTO meetings are like that too, we like to chat quite a bit at night. We do get back, we do get all our work done, but we do like to chat. And so that's kind of what I'm hoping, just a different time of day, because not everyone can go to PTO meetings, and that's not what that's for necessarily, but it's fun. But it's a different time for parents to come in, and so I've set it for 7:30 to 8:30, so if parents want to drop their kids off at 7:30, because they can, they can come in before they have to go to work. So I'm just hoping that people will come have a cup of coffee and get to know me and ask questions about the school. Yeah, that's what that is.
I think that sounds great. I would just kind of suggest maybe even coordinating with the director of communications with all of that, whenever it like, is applicable.
Advertise with Jack.
For advertising, because I think that's kind of, I, I have a first grader as my eldest, so I'm still relatively new to the district, and I just, the more advertising, even if it seems redundant, seems like a really great way to help that be successful.
Yeah, I've added it to my newsletter, but you're saying add it to Jack's bigger newsletter?
Or have him post it on Facebook or whatever.
Oh, I can have him post it on Facebook.
Lots of media streams, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea, we can do that.
And, you know, kind of making it be part of the process of like, okay, I have it here, and now I send it over to Jack, and then he'll make sure it goes like eight places or wherever.
That's a great idea. I do have positive feedback, this is not probably the time to say it, but I was at Leb Fest this last weekend, and some people commented on how excited, all the posts from Jack and how he's done a great job, just FYI. You guys did a good job. Okay, you have another question?
No, I think that was it for me, thank you.
All right, Tia, you're up.
Well, I have the easier job following Mount Leb, because Katie and I worked on a lot of our things, you'll notice are very similar, but she got to field a lot of the questions, so. Yeah, hopefully you've got a few left over, they're not exactly the same goals, but, all right, so whoever's got, all right, so the first focus area for us is developing empathetic and resilient individuals responsible citizens through the responsive classroom program. And if you, and you can kind of see, we started with the, as a staff, we started with the vision of a learner, and did sort of a review of that, and then we tried to figure out how our goals fit in. So that's what those kind of yellow curves are around the pink and the blue area, those were our, the ones that relate to this one. So if you go to the next slide. The way for us, the implementation and the goal came about slightly differently than at Mount Leb, we were, we were not a responsive classroom school. So the first year I was here, so two years ago, our building goal was to evaluate various programs, and as a staff, decide, do we want to get a program, an SEL program, some consistency, and if so, which program? And then the following year, we decided we wanted to do responsive classroom. So at the same time that Mount Leb was doing their PD, we were doing the same with all of our staff in one of the PD days after the kids went home in June. And then because it was newer to our building in August, we dedicated part of our PD day and decided what our goal would be regarding how to start being a responsive classroom school, and we decided to start with morning meeting. And if you go to the next slide. And so that related to our goal. So our goal is by September, we wanted all classrooms to be doing morning meeting. So, our goal is by September, we wanted all classrooms to be doing morning meetings. And then, we wanted 95% of staff to attend. The reason it's not all staff is we actually have almost all the adults in the building go to a morning meeting, everyone's assigned a classroom to go, so. But sometimes in the front office, one, the front office staff doesn't necessarily go because it's at 8 to 8:30, so it's a busy time in the office, so. But with that exception, pretty much everyone else goes to morning meeting. And then, by January, halfway through the year, we are hoping that all of the classrooms will have reached a point where they are holding morning meetings that have all four of the responsive classroom components of a morning meeting. Some of them already do because some of the teachers had prior responsive classroom training and they're used to implementing morning meetings. But for some of our teachers, it was brand new. So, they might not be able to fit in all of the components in the amount of time that we were allocating to morning meetings. So, we make sure that they have one, but they may not be doing all four, but they will by January is our goal. And we've given folks PD time for that. Our second focus area is the same as Mount Lebs. We also had some teachers go to the same project-based learning conference this past year and bring home some ideas around that. So, we also hope to increase engagement and expand critical and creative thinking through the use of project-based learner-centered strategies. And if you, and that's kind of the yellow area of your vision of a learner. And if you go to the next slide. So, the way we got there as a goal was we took the vision of a learner because I, since it wasn't familiar to me, I didn't know that all this work had been done prior, you know, years ago. So, I figured that was probably true with some of my staff and certainly a lot of the paraeducators did not know. So, we started there in our August PD days. So, we looked at vision of a learner, then we looked at the strategic plan. And as I mentioned, some people had gone to the project-based learning conference. And then, we have been talking about it at staff meetings. And I had the staff complete a self-assessment. So, I'd have some sense of sort of where we are now and what teachers have been doing. And you'll see some of that data in a minute on the next slide. And then, the staff decided on a goal that matches Mount Lebs around trying to figure out how to create or expand a project-based learning experience. So, on the next page, just if you're curious, I wanted to give you an idea. So, on the left side where you see the three graphs, so those are too small for me to read them up there. But they give you an idea of three of the areas, there are a lot of them that we asked questions about, where I feel like we're doing a pretty good job. So, the first one is, do you use culture and, here if you're curious, do you use culture and relationship-building strategies in your classroom? So, this was answered by all teachers, not just classroom teachers. That's why the numbers are so much higher. So, everyone was like, yep, we do that. And again, to Katie's point, we're an elementary school. I would hope that working with elementary kids, this would happen. The two others that were quite high was, do you use differentiation and strategies, and UDL strategies in your classroom? That was also quite high. And the third one, do you use student voice choice and personalization, building strategies in your classroom? And again, that was quite high. But there were other areas where we felt like there was some work to be done. And so, I put two of those up to give you an idea of when we looked at the data, what we found. So, the one that's in the upper right corner is, do you use inquiry and deeper learning strategies in your classroom? And even though 85% say that they do, the interesting thing though is if you look at the pie chart, it gives you a pretty good idea that sort of three-quarters of them, this is not happening very often. So, yes, you do it, but we're not, this is not something that happens even daily, even remotely close to daily. And deeper learning strategies and inquiry can be anything from, you know, really hands-on, asking really deep, open-ended questions. So, these are things we should be able to be doing a lot more often than it appears we are, at least based on our self-assessment. And then, another one that we also felt was, to us felt like it was quite low, is do you use metacognition and reflection strategies? And I think a lot of elementary teachers, you know, this is something that we're used to doing in middle school and high school a lot. You ask kids a lot to assess, how did you think it went? And what do you think you could have done better with your learning? But it does appear that we don't do it as often in elementary as we, as we might and maybe should. So, when looking at this, it kind of led us to, if you'll go to the next slide, this is how we formed our goal around the project-based learning. So, we wanted to collect baseline, the baseline data so we could see where we are and take a look at it as a staff. And then, our idea is, just worded slightly differently probably than yours, but the same idea, which is that we have some grades that already have a really good, strong base of a student-centered, project-based, inquiry-learning, really engaging, big grade, cross-grade project. And those will want to either expand or add another one. And there are some that are going to start and just create one as, as a grade-level team. We had, because we have a lot, we have the IMP program in our school, we wanted to make sure that our sub-bullets under our goal for this project-based learning experience was that we differentiate it so that all of our students, especially our students in IMP, that it's accessible to them. We will have a communication component, which could be, I think of like the wax museum that we're probably going to expand in second grade. So, either orally or in writing, or somehow they are using their communication skills. And one of the things that came a lot, came up a lot for us was trying to make them cross-disciplinary. So, with arts and letters, because it is our ELA program, but each of the modules, often they have a theme that relates to either science or social studies. And so, it's a really nice way to link in, say the unit is, it's an ELA unit and it's on the heart. So, there's a whole science component, which means that group's probably going to, they've already been talking to the nurse about doing some things to link. And there's another unit that has to do with, well, a lot of it has to do with art, as you probably guessed from the title of the ELA program. So, a lot of them have crossed over to ask the art teacher if she can participate. And I can't remember which one's working with the music teacher, so. All right, so that's goal two. And then, goal three is the most complicated one, I think. But something that we are going to try and do is to find a way to measure so that we can then work on improving academic intervention outcomes. It's really complicated. But what we are trying to do is find a way to measure how we are actually, are interventions doing what we're hoping they're doing? Because there is a trade-off. You're pulling kids out of a classroom with, you know, a wonderful teacher who's doing really cool things and you're hoping that it is helping the students who need a little boost in reading or math. But unless we're finding a way to measure whether or not they are gaining that, then, then we have to kind of look at this trade-off and figure out, do we need to, you know, change what we're using for intervention? So, the goal is to find a way to measure that everyone agrees feels like the right measurement and then to find ways to improve and kind of walk ourselves through a measure-improve cycle. And I would like to do this with both our math intervention, which for our school goes through Title I, and reading, which in our school is mostly non-Titel I. So, the idea is by October, we'll collect baseline academic assessment data for students that are receiving academic interventions. And by January, because it's going to take a lot of work to build consensus around, how do you actually measure in a way that is fair and gives you the information you're looking for on whether or not the kids are growing? Because if they're getting support, it's because they're struggling. So, you have to weigh that against the fact that they are also, but they also need to move, the growth still needs to be there. And so, what is a reasonable amount of growth when you've isolated just the students that you're pulling data from that are struggling? So, it's a bit complicated, but the idea is by January to reach consensus. And then, at the end of the year, I'd like to have three data points, beginning, middle, and end of the year, so that we can look at them by the measures we've all agreed should be, that everyone hopefully who's working with the kids feels are reflective of what we're hoping to measure. And then, if you go, I think that should be it, but if you check the next slide, okay. The other thing just to add, which I thought was interesting. So, when you had added kind of the highlights, like the other things to think about that are happening at the school, and a lot of them are quite similar. One of the things I think I should point out that is a little different is, one of the things Katie had mentioned was at Mount Leb, they have the Miss Kendra program in guidance. And their, last year, we kind of both piloted it in not as many grades. And Mount Leb is expanding it to some of the other grades. And we also are doing something different with guidance, but it's, but it's not with Miss Kendra. And so, that is something that's sort of substantially different in terms of like those focus areas that were on that last slide. And then, I'm just going to take questions.
Can you expand on that guidance point a little more?
Oh, so, I'm going to do a little bit of like the Miss Kendra piece and then I'll tell you what we're, what we're doing on the other side. So, Miss Kendra was a program, wow, it's a lot of history there. There's, it's a, it's a program that's meant for SEL, so social, emotional learning, for guidance that, and I think actually, does it go all the way up to fourth grade? I guess it could. We decided to try it in kindergarten to see how we felt about it. So, it comes with the program, the guidance counselors worked with it. Yeah, DH was where, DHMC had, they didn't create the program, but they were working with it and expanding it out to, to see how it went. So, and it touches on all kinds of things. There's units on, you know, it's what you would expect, sort of your feelings and trauma. And it's about how do you deal with worries? What things can isolate your worry and help you deal with your worries and whatnot? Yeah. So, at Hanover Street, so we did do it last year in kindergarten. We surveyed the staff and guidance and it didn't for us feel, we ran into a lot of issues that seemed very uncomfortable for some of our kiddos and some of our parents. So, we decided that we would not continue with the Miss Kendra program. So, we are doing something different with our guidance. Our guidance is working, we're trying to develop guidance lessons that feed more around team building. And so, there, he's working, our guidance counselor's working with the tech part of the house. And so, we're doing, we're calling it kind of team time for guidance. So, it's guidance slash team time. And the idea is that maybe the lesson, the guidance lesson is on how to deal with frustration. And so, we do it through a project where they actually are hands-on and they're building something with team members. And so, the lesson is about what do you do when the, you know, your team members, it's, you know, you have to agree how you're going to build your sculpture. And what if everyone doesn't agree? What do you do when you get frustrated? But actually trying to do it through hands-on. And we'll see how it goes. It's an experiment this year, we're starting, September felt, most of the lessons were normal guidance till about a month ago, I mean, a week ago. And now, we're beginning to do some hands-on in third grade and it'll begin to bubble down. And then, we'll ask everyone how they thought it went.
And is Mount Leb also doing the Miss Kendra program? Like, that's the wanting to continue that feels like a good fit?
Yeah, it was a good fit at our school. There were some hesitation at the beginning with some of the teachers and then we, just more of the teachers about some of the topics that were taught. And but our, it works well and we've only received positive things, feedback from our families and our teachers. So, it's worked well and it gives the guidance counselor a chance to get into, our school counselor a chance to get into the kindergarten and first grade classes every week, so.
Yeah, that's one thing that's, that is also a little different. And then, I don't want to get too sidetracked because I'm sorry, I should have asked you questions for goals first. But we also, we have guidance as a special because we have so many more classrooms than Mount Leb does, that we do guidance, like every group has, every, every class has guidance, whereas that's not the case in Mount Leb. So, it's just sort of a different model to, to take care of what we need for numbers and specials.
Other questions for, yeah, comments, go ahead?
One thing that was a little bit, just a little different in terms of the Hanover Street presentation from standing the other, have both focuses and goals, which I think, I get it, but truthfully, it just, I don't know how we would track. Maybe we won't track them, I just, maybe they could be one.
Yeah, I think we're going to track the goals. They just had those focus areas as we looked at those academic strategic plan and school choice one too, so.
I found myself a smidge confused.
So, sorry, so with each goal, we just tried to start with the big picture, which is what is it that we're trying to improve? But the goal is the thing, that's the smart goal that should be measurable and attainable and blah, 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 yep.
So, the, there were two things. One, I just wanted to try to tie together things that you're saying and things I've been hearing and make sure I know again that I, all the words are connected in my head. So, the responsive classroom implementation and like the morning meetings, that it's a, it's a big focus. Is this the thing where like my first grader comes home and says, like, we had to do our feeling sticks this morning where you like put your, we all have to tell each other whether we're excited or mad or whatever else and we put our, like, in the morning? Is that the, is that an example of they have to do an emotional activity or?
So, the way morning meeting, so it could be, but it could also really honestly be with the younger grades. It could be any of 100 things that happened in that room during the day. But morning meeting typically, the idea is everyone greets each other by name in some fashion. The idea being that you recognize everyone who's there and make everyone feel like they're included. So, there's some sort of a greeting that happens, that's the first element of it. And then, there are, there's a share. And that can be kids sharing like the one I heard today, the, you know, what did you, what was fun that you did over the weekend? But it goes, you know, what are you looking forward to? It could be anything. And there are different ways to do it, but often they start going around in a circle. They could do anything, but they share something. And then, they usually do an activity, which can be usually a movement activity, but it doesn't have to be, but it's often a movement activity. And then, they have, you've probably seen them. If you Google morning meeting, if you're ever curious, you'll see all these images of, you end with a, with a morning message. And that's the thing you always see when you see pictures of elementary kids' classrooms. It's on a big flip chart usually, but we often do it digitally. And it's on the wall and it's sort of, good morning class, this is what we're going to do today. And it's sort of the bridge between starting the day and getting into academics. So, maybe like the day before, you worked on CH words, the CH sound. And so, you blend it into your morning message. Maybe you make a bunch of errors in the morning message in fourth grade that are grammar and the class goes around and reads the morning message and says, oh, I see you missed punctuation here, you missed punctuation there. And you use that as your bridge to academics. So, it's not really, you know, maybe someone did something with feeling sticks for the activity or the share?
I was seeing the morning activity, that students participate in a group activity that fosters social, emotional, or academic learning. And I think that trying to understand how all those pieces are fitting together and why, like I, like trying to understand why this responsive classroom model is so, it's such a focus at our elementary school level? Just trying to understand sort of like what that's doing that maybe wasn't being done before. So, I feel like I'm getting a sense of that, which is good. For the proving, for the measuring interventions and then sort of coming back and deciding whether they've been effective, all right? I'm glad to hear that that's a focus. I was curious about, why is the measurement so hard? Because I know that like one of the things we've gotten for reading so far has been those, the like the DIBBLES scores or whatever and like those, it's actually, it's been great. It's sort of, it's very clear. It's like, look, we have this chart and it tells you how you did at the beginning and it's really easy to track. And I'm just like-
So, here's where the, when you start to think about the data, here's where it gets to be a little confusing. So, what you're trying to isolate, which is hard, is, so let's say there are, there are so many assessments we can do to measure whether the child's making progress. The trickier thing is what do you compare it to? Because if they weren't getting the intervention, they would have been, say, in the classroom, hopefully learning phonics and other ways to interpret reading. So, has the child grown, grown more than they would have if you didn't do the intervention? That's what makes the measurement complicated. I can tell you they grew, but it gets really complicated to figure out, is that due to, how much of that is due to the intervention itself? Because they were going to have-
So, you, I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
So, it, so it's the kind of thing where you just need to agree on what you're comparing it to? So, if you say like, you know, the-
Precisely.
The average first grader or the average second grader improved this much between time A and time B, therefore, we want to be seeing an improvement that's greater than that for kids who, you know, proportionally for kids who are receiving interventions because, et cetera. So, it's just, you need to come to some agreement amongst yourselves about like what that data point is.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And if you think about it, you know, let's take math intervention. It's the same thing. So, the student who gets math intervention, so you can measure how much they grew. But the question is, what is, yeah, it's exactly, what do you compare it to? Because the kids that are getting math intervention are struggling math students. So, is it fair to say that they should grow more than the kids who didn't get the intervention? Well, maybe because they're getting an intervention. On the other hand, they're struggling with their math skills, which is why they're getting the intervention. So, is it really fair to say they should grow more than the kids who didn't get the intervention?
Or maybe, or maybe you set an individual kid and say like, we want to see an X in this student and-
Yeah, could you grow what the average child with your skills at the beginning of the year grows across the nation? That may be, but yes, you're thinking about it correctly. That's where it gets complicated. There's plenty of data, it's kind of what do we do with it?
I have no notes.
Excellent. This is great. This is what I wanted to see. So I appreciate the presentation. Good job. Anything else?
Yes. I also wanted to give the positive feedback that the graphics included made it really, really clear. Particularly the graphics that said where teachers currently feel like it's, it's going well. Those graphs that say, oh, with that self-assessment, we feel like this is great. And now this is kind of what our goal is for the year, I think was really helpful and clear. I, I did have, I know you've said this, but if you could quickly summarize how you describe the responsive classroom, just to be, I think I understand that it's very SEL focused and that was kind of missing.
Oh, do you mean like the, how to describe the responsive classroom program? Like what does it do for us?
Yes.
Yeah, so it is, and Katie, you can help here too. So it is basically a program that's put together to help kids with social, emotional learning. But it's, it, it can be, it's a lot bigger than morning meeting. That's just one of the many places you can start. So it has all kinds of components around student choice, how to, what to do with student behaviors. It has to do with the words that you use around, like a lot of it is, do you, do you talk about, I'm going to use an obvious one that you wouldn't do, but do you talk about punishment? Or do you talk about a logical consequence? And how do you make sure that everything lines up in a way that makes sense to children at the developmental point they are?
And then it's also like when students need to take a break, it's like having students help them identify their feelings or identify kind of what would be a natural, what they need. And so they take a break if something doesn't go right. That's all part of the responsive classroom too. And take a break and think about your actions and then come back and you can talk about it. And then it also helps build the classroom community too. And that's the first six weeks of school with responsive classroom is all about building a classroom community where you can talk about hard things, get to know each other. Do, that's why you do a lot of different games and they're probably doing feeling games right now. So the teacher can kind of get her pulse on what's going on in the classroom. So.
Okay, thank you. This was wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Okay, that moves us back to the superintendent update.
Great, I know we have lots of presentation tonight, so I am just going to briefly hit the highlights from our strategic, strategic plan board update from September 2025. You all have a copy. These are some of the, some of the steps that we've moved forward with our, with our strategic plan. So as we head, head to the end of September, as you can tell, we've established some baselines for intentional learner-centered practices. At the high school, they created a rubric for the vision of a graduate. I am going to take that rubric for the graduate and help create similar documents for the elementary and middle school in grade appropriate language. And we will get that to the elementary school students also. With the 306s now into law, we've shifted our focus to curriculum and competency. So that work has been started in policy committee and also in educational committee. As an update, our goal is to have district-approved standards and competencies approved by this board by the end of the school year. So I think Karen and I are shooting for May or June to get all of those curriculum documents. One of the issues that we had, our curriculum documents have been traditionally stored in Google Drive. So that means they've been owned by multiple teachers all over the district. So one of the things that Karen has been working on for quite some time now is being able to consolidate all of those documents in the owners into one location in a single master file. So we will have ownership them rather than teacher-owned, which is a, a huge list lift, but we are working on that. In October, we have our professional development day coming up on October 10th. So our professional development teams within the buildings at the district office have been reviewing data, looking at requests from teachers, looking at the strategic plan and getting those options out. So after that date, we will provide an update for that. In our area of growing our systems, we've heard an update last week from committee member O'Hara about the SWAC group looking about expanding their options and exploring collaboration with other community partners. I'm also pleased to announce the facilities department has been starting to issue RFPs. So that was one of our strategic goals is to get RFPs out for some of our existing contracts. As you know, all of the school level and just board-level budget meetings have been scheduled. So you should all have those dates. We're continuing to look at our class sizes. We've adopted our class size policy. Our SAU exploratory committee continues to do the work. This week, we had a surprise meeting pop up with people from the city looking at potential locations for preschool. So that city group came in to meet with Tim and I and John and did a tour of the SAU to see what it would look like if they were able to use that space for a citywide preschool program. So there, there's lots of questions, I guess, with the building as what they had before, especially in terms of egresses and entrances. So I believe they said that they were going to send over a architect just to see what that outfit would look like. They also looked at our existing land around the SAU, which is one of the topics that we will talk about in our dual-board meeting on October 1st. And tonight, this board is going to review the presentation of the examination of the two elementary schools for programming and efficiencies. And also we all have a meeting for Lil and I to meet with the Lebanon High School Student Council. And finally, in growing our area, growing our family and community partnerships, we're starting to get great feedback on the website. Both Tyler and Jack are able to make some immediate changes to those and from the feedback that we're receiving. And then just one small change in the newsletter. Now we are having that newsletter embedded in the emails. You don't have to click on the link from the email. So we saw an 89% increase in access from my superintendent newsletter from August to September, which is pretty exciting for Emma who works tirelessly on that with me. So lots of other good stuff up here in this update on the strategic plan. But I thought it was important for you just that you could see these. Also, I am going to be meeting with both Jack and Tyler to get some spots on the website so I can put these updates for the community and tracking our goals as we talked about before. And also we will start getting a tab for our budget documents as we move into budget season. Any questions on the update for the strategic plan September? Right, I'm going to move next, Tyler, into my next presentation, which is examining elementary schools through equity enrollment lenses. So there's lots of information here. I think it's important that I provide a little bit of background about this. So as you recall, this was a board goal last year. And this has been an established action step within our strategic plan. So the previous board wanted us to look at the elementaries in terms of programming and equity of class sizes. So when I started here a couple of years ago, there was a disparity in classes. So some class sizes at one elementary school was considerably less than that same grade level. So that is that work that has started and last year with everything that we did accomplish, this one sort of pushed into the summer. So here is that presentation. So as I mentioned before, this presentation is going to be twofold. First, we're going to look at equity and class sizes at both of our elementary school. Our goal was to balance enrollment and to be able to distribute resources more equitably and ensure that all students have access to comparable learning opportunities and support. So I think those that have gone on the board, a couple of years, you can see our elementaries are moving closer and closer to full alignment of that experience. Second, the goal was developed based, if we could organize our school by grade bands, then we could better align our curriculum, instruction and professional development within those grade spans. This structure, if we were able to group, and I will show you the different scenarios, this would allow us to target our resources more effectively, strengthen our collaboration among staff and ultimately enhance the quality of instruction and achievement for all students. So tonight, I'm going to go through this presentation. I'm going to pause a couple of slides so we can ask questions. We're going to look at some of the trends and potential pathways forward that will both support equity and instructional excellence across our elementary schools and also looking at any potential efficiencies moving forward. So, thank you, Tyler. Let's move on and we're going to start with Mount Lebanon. All right, next slide. All right, perfect. So this is our current enrollment for Mount Lebanon Elementary School. As you can see, our class sizes there, so we have two pre-K classrooms and we serve potentially about 48 students. That varies as we have students coming in for services in addition to that. At Mount Leb, we have one self-contained classroom. And this year, there are six students. In kindergarten, we have three classrooms. And I want to say these numbers were accurate when I pulled them from the data, so they might be slightly off. But this was accurate as of last week. So we have 42 kindergartners in kindergarten, three teachers, average class size roughly 14. First grade, three teachers, 48 first graders, average class size 16. In second grade, three classroom teachers. This is a smaller class here. We have about 38 students. The average class size is 13. Moving into third grade, we have two teachers, 37 students, class size is around 19. And fourth grade, two teachers and 37 students with the average class size around 19. So important to know about this, Mount Lebanon School is at full capacity with those 16 classrooms. All right? Any questions about Mount Leb before I move on to their projected enrollment for next year?
When it comes to pre-K, there are two age groups in the pre-K.
Yeah.
Is that number combined?
Yeah.
Both, okay.
Yes. All right, so if we're looking towards next year on, based on the numbers that we know, as you know, kindergarten is a moving target. We often don't know those students before coming in. These are the projected numbers going forward. This year, as I recalled in the current slide, we had that small class of 38. They are moving up to third grade where we have two teachers. So they will be in a class sizes of 19. So in those perspective class sizes, kindergarten, if we have 45 students, which we tend to like to project, we will have class sizes of 15, first grade 14, second grade 16, third grade 19, fourth grade 19. Any questions about projected enrollment at Mount Leb? All right, let's move on to Hanover Street. All right, Hanover Street, they have, actually, they use three self-contained classrooms with two teachers. And I will get you that number from there. So I believe there is about 14 students, grades K to four. But based on some of the needs, they needed those three additional classroom spaces. But there are two teachers that are teaching them. In kindergarten, we saw our largest enrollment this year. And a lot of these students enrolled at the very end of August. This was after our GJ Fab policy where we allowed our faculty to bring our students. And as we projected, this is where we ended up. So we end up right now sitting with four classroom teachers with 70 students. So we're averaging a class size of 17, 18. And as I mentioned before, those students did come in at the very end of August. In first grade, they have four teachers for 64 students. And their average class sizes are 16. Second grade, they have three teachers per grade level, 57 students with a class sizes of 19. Grade three, they have four grade level teachers with 59 students with a class average of 15. In fourth grade, with three teachers, 61 students averaging about 20 per class. Last year, we had some teacher movement here and the principal decided where to put that extra teacher in third grade versus second grade due to the nature of the students and the need. So some of that decision was made for there. So they're using actually 21 classrooms this year. When I was asking them about how many classrooms that they could have, she did say that they potentially could go to 24 or 25 classrooms. When we did that addition, at one point in time, we had like six of our related services in one classroom. So some of those related services and teachers are spread out into two classrooms. But she comfortably said that if it were to be that 24, 25 could be that magic number, although that would be, I think, a significant change to what they're used to right now. So any questions on what's happening at Hanover Street this year? All right, projected enrollment. Again, self-contained, those kids aren't, none of those kids, actually, we'll need three, sorry, we'll still need three classrooms because we have the same number of projected kindergartners coming in as what we are losing in fourth grade. So we'll still have two teachers with three classrooms. Again, I did not know what to project for kindergarten, so I used this year's number, wondering if that would be our same enrollment for there. So we would have four teachers in kindergarten with 70 students, again, average 17, 18 students. Moving on to first grade next year, those current kindergartners are moving up to first grade. So they would be in that same size class cohort. Second grade, right now, there are four teachers with 64 students, average class sizes of 16. Third grade, three teachers, 57 students, average class size of 19. Grade four, three teachers, 60 students, average class size of 20. Any questions about that?
I just, are the projections based on the study that we had done? Is that where the projections are pulled from?
Most of them, except kindergarten, which like I said before, is, we don't have an accurate census of, from kindergarten. We do look at that enrollment, but if we looked at our enrollment study, this kindergarten is an anomaly that came in this year.
How much are we off from the projections? Do you know?
I have that paper here. I pulled the enrollment study for the large, the total enrollment. I'd have to look to see what it is. I know Hanover Street just said, because we had talked about it, we anticipated that one to increase more than it would. But it was actually Mount Leb in the future enrollment study was going to increase more.
No, this, I mean, this makes it look like, I mean, if we had 45 students at Mount Leb and 70 at Hanover Street, then we're off by like 15% on the garden projections.
Yeah.
Skews everything.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
So I also wanted to talk about the kindergarten number.
Sure.
I know that in our class size policy, we targeted 15 for kindergarten with up to 18 for new arrivals. I understand that, that the numbers in this are literally because of that. And if it's into the relief valve that we, we put into the policy. But if we do find that for a second year in a row, the class number is 17, 18, do we have plans in place to hire an additional kindergarten teacher or start an additional kindergarten class?
Sure, that is something to consider. So I wanted to go back to some of the factors that we have. A is with kindergarten with JG Fab. So that is going to be one of my future recommendations. If we continue with JG Fab is that kindergarten decisions don't get made until, I'm very late in the year. Also, we have, this year and in years past, we've had several parents that live either in the Mount Leb or the Hanover Street District asking to go to the other school. So based on enrollment, they can be approved by the building principal. Those all happened before, again, these late enrollments. So that's something else to consider. And you'll see this on my final slide too. We also have a boundary area, Slaton Hill, that, I'm trying to do lots of research on that, but we have families living on both sides there, going to different schools. So from what I understand, I don't know how many years passed, it was, they could pick a side. So I, one of my future recommendations is I think we need to make a decision about that area if they belong to Mount Leb or Hanover Street.
How many, do you know, how many students, how many kindergartners did you accept? G, J, all the letters? That one?
What?
Put it to us last?
Yeah.
Ask me?
I think it was at our PTO, they asked me.
Not a ton that were kindergarten. Why? Number that we accepted, but.
We have two kindergartners, one from each.
That wasn't really, that's not really what, like, that didn't like do anything.
No, it was the late arrivals.
Yeah, late arrivals. And I think there are a few of those ones that normally would be routed to Mount Leb, that Slaton Hill.
But across the two, I mean, but even, that's sort of just, that's just stuff around. But like we're, I mean, that's a, that's a lot to be off. Like the, in, just in terms of like the, the projection had, to be off by 15% is, I feel like we need to, we, we need to look at that again, or at least kind of keep that in mind, because I think that like.
If it's a one-year anomaly, that's.
Right, I think we want to.
Well, except, except it's going to flow through all the others. So it's not, because it's kindergarten, it's not going to be a one-year anomaly. It has a cascading effect through all the year section.
Do we know if the late arrivals are people settling here or people taking a two-year contract and DHMC? Like what are we talking?
I think there are a combination for, once. I think there were a combination for, once you came to the school, there were several Dartmouth people that came in. Tim and I actually saw a new proposed study going up on Mount Support Road. We met with that developer because he presented that there's going to be a lot of studios and one bedroom. And we did ask the question.
Merrick, one of the, one of the Merricks.
Yeah, and we did ask the question to ask them to go back to the previous developments that they have with one bedrooms and studios. Because what I'm hearing is that families are moving into those one bedrooms. And he was able to identify that last development where there was not supposed to be students in those, those one development. I think there was 14 across the district. So people are moving into.
Yeah, and the new, and the new, the new development they're working on actually has a greater, so the, 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 the last one was mostly one beds with a little bit of studios. The new one that they're just proposing is going to be.
More one bedroom, right?
Mostly one beds, but, but the, like 50% one beds, 25% two beds, 25% studios. So.
I mean, we just, I think it's just something that we need to like start, I, I mean, like in the house, I don't know, the housing committee or whatever task, I don't know what you guys are. The housing staff, the housing task force. And then maybe the city school board task force. I feel like, like, like that's a big, that's actually a pretty substantial red flag to me. Not in the sense that it's like a terrible catastrophe, but in the sense that it's like, we've, we've been projecting pretty steady enrollment, I think, across the district. Like, the enrollments that we, that we looked at from the study were like pretty steady Eddie. And I feel like it'd be, but we've also like had a lot of open questions about how the new developments were going to change that. And I think that we need to be tracking it pretty closely.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you can look at some of the trends, too. You will see those, those bubble years that are just larger class sizes. Our current fifth grade is a large, our larger cohort, too, as well. That's why they had moved there.
And some of those bubbles weren't accounted for in the study. Because there, sometimes the, the bubble happens and we don't, no one really knows, it's not predicted. So there, there are bubble years that happen. But you're right, having a bubble year in kindergarten means that it affects us for longer.
Yeah, and I think bubble, bubble years are predictable, like they move through as a bubble. And I think that when we looked at the, when we compared the last enrollment study that we did that just, that had like finished, when we compared that with actual enrollments over that time period, it was extremely accurate. And I think that if we're seeing something that's, if we're seeing a change, that we want to track that. Because like 15%, off by 15% affects our staffing.
Kindergarten is the hardest one to predict.
Totally, absolutely. I'm not, I'm not like, it's not a blame game. It's a like, this affects our.
And we anticipated, like I said, that growth at Mount Lab. So let's go on to the next slide. So I combined our numbers and our existing teachers and to see what would we need from there. So if we combined our 115 kindergarteners, we would need seven teachers, seven classrooms. If we combined our 112 first graders, we would need seven teachers for average class sizes, 16, seven classrooms, second grade, the same number. Third grade, we would have five teachers per grade level, projection of 95 students, class sizes of 19, five classrooms needed. Fourth grade, we have 96 students, we'd have five teachers, again, class sizes of 19. So, and then with, we'd have our two pre-K classrooms. And we would need those four self-contained classrooms. So roughly 37 classrooms, 36 teachers. So based on if we just combined this, the analysis is from this, we wouldn't be able to reduce a teacher. We still may need to hire teachers. If, excuse me, if we do this at Hanover Street School, K and one classes are currently now, I said at 17, 18. At MLS, they are 15 and 16. So you would see a slight reduction in that class size for there. There would be no significant change in class sizes in grade two to four at either elementary school. Any questions about that before I go into the different configurations?
If by configurations, you mean like how on earth you would combine?
Yes.
Scenarios, scenarios.
Scenarios, yeah. All right, first one. Scenario one, we would have a preschool through first grade and then a second through fourth grade. So if you look at this, we'd have the preschool needing those two classrooms. We would need two self-contained room needed. And we would need 14 classrooms for K and one for there, with a total of 18 classrooms needed. And on the other side, we would still have those two self-contained classrooms for our older group. We would need seven seventh grade classes, five third grade classes, and five fourth grade classes. So a total of 19 rooms. We cannot use this model because Mount Lebanon could not configure either of them. All right, let's move on to scenario two. In this model, I put it as we'd have preschool through second grade and third through fourth grade. This model assumes that preschool through second would be at Hanover Street School. And grades three and four would be at Mount Lebanon School. As you can see, for the total numbers of rooms needed to do a pre-K to two scenario is 26. This could not be feasible because neither buildings would have rooms for 26 spaces. All right, moving on to scenario number three. This one's a little different. This scenario assumes that self-contained, younger's kindergarten first would be at Mount Lab. And then we would move pre-K in grades two to four at Hanover Street. We would have to relocate some of the playground equipment from Mount Lab to Hanover Street for the preschool. And we would need to outfit some of the bathrooms and with some changing tables. So in this scenario, we would have 16 classrooms. So our Mount Lab would be at capacity. And roughly, our, sorry, Hanover Street with the older kids and self-contained and pre-K, they could make that fit. So scenario three is feasible so far. Okay? All right, I looked at one more scenario here. This is, we would have a scenario with preschool through first grade, then a second through fourth grade with all the self-contained kids. That means all the self-contained students from K to four would be located in one school. This model would assume that pre-K to one would be located at Mount Lebanon School. And grades two to four would be at Hanover Streets. The self-contained programs from, students from K to four would be located at Hanover Streets. So one of the issues about this is those students in K to one in the self-contained program would not have access to their typical peers. So in the self-contained programs, IMP and some of our behavioral programs, those students are integrated with their classroom peers and grade levels. This model does work. It is not a model that I recommend because of that reason. Any questions on that fourth model?
I don't have any questions, but I would agree with the importance of these students having access to their typical peers.
I agree with Tia.
Thank you. All right, so next slide is the consideration. So as I started the presentation, the reconfiguration and grouping of students would allow for a deeper focus on English, language, arts, and math within the learning bands. We always want to keep the students at the center of our decisions. That decision would be made on strengthening the education program. If we create, if we create a scenario where we are doing a K to two, K to one, this is going to create another transition for students and families. Some of them would be attending three schools and some would attend, sorry, instead of attending three schools, elementary, middle, and high, they would be attending four schools at the Lebanon School District. As you can see from the data, there are no efficiencies due to looking at class sizes during the budgeting process in the scenario. So I'd like to really praise our administration and the school board. A lot of this work we have done through careful budgeting and efficiencies and possible, efficiencies and programming. We had talked about scenario three is feasible, but it is going to require just some minor outfitting for the Hanover Street space for pre-K. As I mentioned in our conversation before, we do have several students who either attend Mount Lab or Hanover Street, Hanover Street School outside their neighborhood school. This year, the, the state has passed a new law that is going to make us adopt a new inter-district transfer policy. This will be coming to us in the New Hampshire School Board ball updates. So we have to create this new policy. So this will allow any student in either side to apply to go to the other school if there is room. So currently, right now, under our current approvals, when I say yes, you can attend Hanover Street for the, for the year. It is a one-year approval. So when I respond back and they say they have room, I let the parents know it is for one year. They will need to apply again, and they need to provide their own transportation. Again, I mentioned we had a large amount of students in Hanover Street enroll at the end of August, unexpected. And this was made after the parental request in our policy of GJ Fab. So that is something that I will bring up later on when we continue to look at those policies. Also, this change would require school start times to stagger at Mount Lab and Hanover Street, which would in turn would affect the middle school and the high school. So this would have a cost implication for this. And it would, less, would mean less students would be able to walk to school because we are going to be creating a distance for those schools. We couldn't start Mount Lab and Hanover Street at the same, at the same time. Parents wouldn't be able to get their students.
Still have kids in two schools.
Schools. So if you have a kindergartner, a third grader, you'd.
You'd have to get to kindergarten and then to third grade. Instead of just going to one school.
And potentially the middle school and the high school for those parents. So we'd have to stagger them. And then finally, the consideration, as I mentioned before, in the past, families from Slaton Hill area will given options for which elementary school to attend. This ambiguity, ambiguity has caused confusion and some parental expectations as they move into that area.
So just a question on that, you said in the past, so that's no longer the case?
No, right now, I go and they say, I say, this is where you are. It's either Mount Lab or Hanover Street. And they say, well, my neighbor who lives right next door got to choose. And then I make them go through the appropriate process and say, yes, you are assigned to Mount Lab, vice versa. You need to email the principal to see if there's room. And then we can grant a one-year approval.
Does that make like transportation headaches, having to serve?
Most of the time, transportation is not supposed to be provided. But since there are some transportation stops because it was set up prior, there's buses coming in both directions from that area.
But it does, it is whatever we decide, whether it's or not, whatever we decide, we're going to, that will eventually be less of an issue. But it's going to be an issue no matter what because having people on both sides of the road and both sides of the street, at schools is going to be an issue for a couple more years.
So I have a recommendation for this board. So based on the data and the information presented tonight, it's my recommendation that we don't proceed with any scenario. Instead, continue to monitor our class sizes, continue to review students on approval. We should memorialize school boundary lines and assess capacity. We will also need to update several policies this year. We also can continue to run scenarios in future years if we identify potential opportunities for efficiencies and equity.
Questions, comments? Amy?
I just want to say thank you. This is great. It's helpful to see it all laid out and to see various scenarios and to have all the data in one place to talk about facts instead of feelings without.
And to know what goes into the, what goes into kind of consideration.
Yes.
Very educational, thank you.
John has a.
Can we talk a little bit about scenario three, but Amy, so I understand correctly? So looking at that slide, it's looking like 16 classrooms that we needed at MLS to house the pre-K. Excuse me.
MLS.
Kindergarten, the one, and self-contained.
MLS, right.
Yep.
At MLS. And then over on the right is HSS. And you'd have two, three, four, self-contained. What is the downfall?
I just, the, the downfall, there's actually, I just said, there's only minor equipment stuff to be moved and changing tables. I think the downfall is looking at the overall picture that which requires changing the bus times and start times for the cost of transportation and the impact for families where the class sizes may be better to be reduced by a teacher or other areas for that.
What's the cost of, you know, one of the, one of the things that swirls around my head is the cost of, you know, we've got kindergarten chairs and tables in one building, you know what I mean? And another. And, you know, if chairs break in Mount Lab, are we looking at Hanover Street for extra chairs before? We're purchasing those types of things, curriculum materials, et cetera, et cetera. All that stuff adds up. And so is there a number when we talk about this that we're considering?
We didn't, I didn't put any of those numbers for that because I made the recommendation not to move forward with it because of, I think it would, the cost and the issues of transition to the multiple families. And I think the will of the community right now, we're not seeing a huge benefit. Tim can say, though, we do have, our director of facilities has an area right now when we have chairs and tables and things like that. Our schools currently share that stuff. When we've had to move teachers from one school to another, those classrooms get to move with them if, unless it was bought with PTO funds or something like that. So, and the curriculum materials are currently shared as well.
My other question is, did you consider kind of one through four at HSS and all the rest at MLS? But the downsides might be there. Just because I, my quick numbers, it looks like that is a scenario that could possibly work and has some benefits to additional kindergarten pre-K.
I can certainly run those numbers for you.
And then the other thing.
So you're saying would be?
One, four.
One, four.
At HSS, and then everyone else at MLS.
But would that keep the self-contained students away from their peers?
Maybe, maybe not. I get 24, which means there would still be a classroom at HSS. It really depends on the student self-contained program.
I'd have to give you those specifics of those.
Sounds like those numbers are really, numbers are really low. The question is how low?
I think the, the thing that, as, like, keeps, I keep kind of thinking about that, I know, we don't, this is really helpful, I really appreciate this, this is a lot of information. Bus times for kids, Lebanon's 42 square miles. Like, bus times, little kids needing to transition, sort of, all, like, kids from everywhere in Lebanon to schools on different sides of the city. Like, is a little, like, little kids on buses for long times in the mornings? Sort of what I'm thinking about. If we were to move to that rather than having them be sort of little kids centered on schools that are likely closer to them geographically?
I think one of the pieces, too, is currently a lot of students at both schools walk to school with their families, which is a nice benefit. So that would be more kids on buses for longer. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to be honest, like, I think those, the, the four transitions plus the transit time for little kids are the two points that I feel like are, and the fact that we aren't saving anything. I think like if you said like, hey, this is going to, you know, reduce taxes by a whole pantload, that would be a conversation. But I think that like lacking a sort of, like, strong financial win here and like sort of, it feels like losing some significant benefits in terms of time. And, yeah, it's hard to, hard to see.
I would agree with that. I would also kind of agree that looking at a potential fifth scenario, just kind of logistically, if there's not going to be a monetary reward, having kindergarteners establish and get a lot of those skills at Mount Lab only to move the very next year, I wonder how much that's going to be repeating a lot of the behaviors and skills that they're, they're hopeful to be receiving in kindergarten and almost this many changes. Or even with, you know, scenario three, the ping pong, I'm not sure how helpful that is when we do have a district that going to middle school in fifth grade is early. That, that already is kind of offset with their development.
I mean, it, it would reduce Mount Lab to, you know, seven kindergarteners. We turn, we want to invest more in preschool classrooms, it would be fine, it would be two preschool classrooms and they're self-contained, so it'd be considerable smaller school as well. But you're right, it would be one year in the kindergarten and then off into.
I do want to honor that there are a lot of taxpayers that are concerned that there aren't enough pre-K options, though. And I do see that as something that's. and I do see that as something that's interesting. However, wouldn't that also still cost the district more if we're hiring pre-K specific instructors?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, those, and those self-contained numbers vary too, um, just 'cause we have an age span that we need to work with. Um, and, um, you know, some of them are more medically fragile versus some of our self-contains are emotionally handicapped. So I thi- that is one of the challenges.
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, you know, um, you know, as, as a parent, I do think, um, you know, my, my daughter went to the preschool at Mount Leb before starting kindergarten at Hanover Street. And it is kind of hard and sad that we're like, oh, we'll wait till fifth grade and all those parents will remember that you guys are friends and hopefully you'll be friends again. However, um, there are, there seems to be a lot of those positives, particularly the walking to school culture that this town has is unique, and I think something that's a really good thing to boost up.
Yeah, and I, and I know pushing us up to that 24, 25 limit kind of maxes that school out as well. So as we look at our bubble students and as projections as we come forward, I think that's something that we just need to, to continue, um, to, to watch.
Yeah, thank you for all this detail.
Anybody else? Does anybody else wanna say anything? Okay, great. Moving on to business administrator update.
Wow, that was long.
Thanks, Tim.
Update today, update today won't be too, um, too long. We have, uh, the beginning of our sort of re, year review, um, presentations, and we'll do one every board meeting until we get into budget. Uh, so our unassigned fund balance was, uh, $1,061,366. It says approximately, 'cause I did these before we were audited, uh, the auditors were very happy with that number, so, um, I won't be changing it. So that's good. I think we're off by 50 bucks or something. So, that's good.
You keep saying that, Tim, and I still wanna know what the 50 bucks is.
984-721 from unexpendanted expenditure appropriations and $66,000 in excess revenue. We got, uh, and this is not designed to be, um, you'll see the, the detail for each of the last several years during the budget. But, uh, just a high level, um, impact fees and interest. We made significant money in interest fees and other, I think, 200 grand more than we budgeted in, uh, interest where, as long as the bank is still, as long as interest rates are a little high, when it's, might be bad for your mortgage, but it's good for us. The bank is paying us, I think, 4% of our money, so. Uh, the Warren article, Warren article two is the budget Warren article, and when you, uh, approved the budget last year and none of voters passed it, it assumed in a revenue projection, it assumed it'd be a million dollars left from the year that just ended to offset the budget we just started. And as it just said, we're at $1,061,000. So what that means is that the tax rate will be what we promised it would be, what you promised it would be. If it was less than a million dollars, your, the tax rate would be higher than you promised. So, that's good. And when I say we had, uh, $1,061,000 returned, that's after, uh, we put, put aside money for the, uh, cap reserve funds of $650,000, $400,000 to the, uh, building fund and $250,000 to special ed. Uh, and the end of, end of year projects that you approved was, was $363,000. So that's after all those subtractions were made. Uh, the last piece, we'll talk about this more, but when I, again, when you returned a million dollars, what you were able to re, what you were able to reserve, and I think this comes up in a future week, but I'm getting ahead of myself. You're able to withhold 2.5% of money. You, you hold it and then in the eyes of the state at the end of the year, it all goes back and you have to rehold it. So we've been withholding, withholding 2.5% of our total, uh, assessed value since the Warren article was passed before I got here. And so that, that 2.5% number this year is just over a million dollars. So that, that money stays in the bank if you guys need it for some. We'll be talking more about that. Uh, the unexpended, uh, this little chart again, it's just, it's supposed to be high level. Um, here's some major categories, uh, wages and benefits, and then subset of benefits. Uh, tuition, facilities contracts. What I mean by that is all the stuff that we have in the budget that we have to do, um, between plowing and field maintenance, uh, contractor services line, our building, um, our building repair line, um, and even projects that were, that were funded the prior year, end of year. So if you approve $60,000 for a project and it actually costs $40,000, that, that money goes back to the taxpayers at the end of the, the next year. In equipment and dues. It's up to the board to decide if you, you know, are happy with that or not. All I can say is that we try to, we, we budget for wages and benefits for what, um, what people are, are projected to get. If they're leaving, we budget at a mid-range. Benefits, we budget what people have chosen. If it's a vacancy, we budget a family plan. Uh, when you see like retirement, we budget 403B contributions for everybody who's eligible, but if they don't take it, I still budget for it 'cause they can. Um, and the other lines there, uh, we budget for our best projection based on what we know. So, um, like for electricity, we have a rate for this year, but we're gonna start budgeting for a year from now. So we will put in, in cost increase in the budget we propose to you, and hopefully I'm able to negotiate a better rate. So, um, we don't, I hope this shows you that, I hope it doesn't show you we're not like budgeting tight enough 'cause I think we're doing decently. But, um, what I want you to see from that is that we don't assume whatever's in the budget. That's what we have to spend. Our job is to hopefully turn back as much, as much money as we can while also being reasonable. So that's what we're trying to do.
Question here. So for benefits, I'm guessing it's those four numbers to the side that are pulled out, uh, up, add up to that 530 number?
Oh, they probably don't. I, I was just taking my own numbers, so.
But they should in theory, right, or?
Well, there's, there's some other subsets of categories of benefits that I didn't put in there, so.
And then supplies, there's three that gets.
Yeah, but there's, you know, there's lots of other supply line, there's custodial supplies, there's.
So you're just picking out the top ones, is that?
Yeah, I picked out the biggest one. You'll see the detail line by line here in a couple of weeks. This chart, the next chart, the unassigned fund balance history, I started this a while ago when we were trying to really, attack our unassigned fund balance, because having too big of a fund balance does show that you raise too much money early. It's, there's a sweet spot. The board with putting a million dollars back in the budget, basically is giving me the, the picture that a million dollars is a sweet spot. You propose a budget this year with $500,000 returned, and that's what I'm gonna try to hit. Uh, but you can see in 2011, 12, 13, 14, when it was up to 2.5 million. I guess this was, since 2014, I think we, it's come down a little bit. The green, uh, the two, the 2020 line, that's a gray, that was a, oh, that was a big audit adjustment. They made me, they made us do in our favor. Uh, I tried to account for some, he said. Uh, and then the green ones are excess revenue. So, um, we didn't have a lot of excess revenue this year. I like having excess revenue, but, uh, I just told you we had some good revenue numbers. We were down a little bit on tuition. We were down on Medicaid, so it balanced out. Anyway, that's a history for you. I, I just, I do this chart every year for you. Here's our budget process, uh, principal meetings between the 14th and 17th, uh, meeting with you guys the last week of October. And then that's what we're gonna talk about next time, facilities improvement projects on some level. Um, this is a legacy, so as we keep working on the facilities, uh, CIP, we're certainly gonna talk about it. I'm not saying we're gonna go detail into CIP. We're gonna talk about sort of the stuff on the big picture. We'll go over some of the basic budgeting stuff so you know what you're looking at and some knowns and unknowns that I'll present to you. Like, this is what we're gonna put in you for healthcare, some, um, you know, NHS, here's a preview, NHS is not going up. I'm always looking for what you wanna know, um, is there anything specific that you wanna know besides, you can just assume what we did last year, we're certainly doing. Is there something more you wanna know? Or less, you can tell us too. But you guys have done a lot of refining it a lot. I was joking. It's, I thought last year was a good process. Just let me know.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? No, thank you. This is helpful going into these budget meetings.
And these will all be on our new little budget link on the website, so, um, next meeting, Tim will go through another chapter. And I thank you for, Jack, for doing Tim's slides.
All right.
Hey, I did the content. He made him look pretty.
That's what he's supposed to do. That's his job, actually. All right. Um, okay, one of his jobs. Okay, so that moves us, thank you. That moves us on to, now we're going back to nine C, uh, requests from SAU100.
All right. So on September 9th, I was approached by a member of the Cornish School Board, which is SAU100, um, and is inquiring whether we would consider to enter into an agreement similar to, uh, the area agreement with Grantham and Plainfield to accept Cornish's, uh, current eight, kindergarten through eight students. I provided their enrollment below. Obviously, um, I'm not sure which year they would like to consider this agreement, so we started looking at numbers for next year. Um, after hearing our current, um, class sizes and enrollment in elementary, um, I didn't feel that we could accept any K to four students. So I started looking at grades five, six, and seven, um, and started looking at some projections. If you folks are, um, interested in moving this conversation forward, Cornish is requesting that Tim Ball prepare an estimated cost using the assumptions that we apply to the current area agreement, uh, that we have with Plainfield and Grantham. So I, um, I apologize, this came too late. Um, this is the projected rates. These are the rates for 25, 26. So these rates would be higher next year. I do anticipate, um, on this report, I said, uh, one-time equivalent position that we would likely need. Um, I was, uh, connected with the principal from Grantham Village School today, um, and she's seen a bump in her current, um, sixth grade students, so, um, I'm having Principal Harkins look to see what those numbers to potentially, it may be two FTEs. So, um, because of that information coming in, um, they have a large, uh, current sixth grade class. I also provided you, um, with enrollment trends from SAU100, which they provided us, so you can see where their enrollment has been, um, tracking. For people that are new to the board and do not know, um, Cornish for their high school is a school choice district, so we get, um, several students that choose high school at Lebanon High School, um, that come to us, uh, as well, so. So I wanted to have the conversation first because, um, this board, um, has many times talked about, uh, increasing revenues. Um, and as a school district, uh, it's really hard to increase revenues. Um, one of the revenue, um, pieces to increase is through tuition, so this is an opportunity. Um, I also wanted to remind the board that next year, um, there is a charter school opening up in Lebanon, um, pretty close to Hanover Street School where they're targeting to have 60 students, K to three. So that is out, um, some things that we are watching, um, and we won't know until, um, their enrollment time if students will be leaving our district. As you know, anyone can go to our charter school, so it's not just Lebanon students. Also, um, I don't know how many open enrollment bills are floating through the legislation now. But in light of current, um, things at the federal level, there's been a more of an increase in talking about school choice and open enrollment. Um, I know our school board presidents have been talking about, um, open enrollment. The superintendent, um, group, I'm on a committee, um, and we are working on open enrollment. There's been lots of conversations around bringing it back to local control. Um, but there is an existing school that has an open enrollment school now, and I have heard from several of my colleagues from around the state and their boards, because of low enrollment, are directing them to explore this. So, um, it's gonna be an interesting year for public education, so, um, I wanted for us to kinda, to look at this data as a whole. Um, and I thank Tim for kind of running this numbers. And as soon as I get those calculations for, um, seventh and, enrollments for seventh and eighth grade next year, I can kind of fine tune that, but I, I anticipate it wouldn't be more than two FTEs that it would cost.
Amy, Meredith's 1043.
Yep, and it, I, yeah, yep.
I have a question. Um, if open enrollment does pass, uh, can we just talk briefly about what that anticipates on area agreements?
I, uh, briefly spoke to our attorney yesterday, and he said that, you know, our, our area agreement should supersede our, the open enrollment piece. I don't know if it is, legislation's going to try to un-
Control that.
Do that, but that was, I did ask that question to him yesterday.
I cannot imagine for even a moment that people writing this legislation at the state level have even considered area agreements.
Yes, that is exactly correct.
At one point in time, there's people at, there's people at the department that didn't know that these existed all throughout the state. So, and there's lots of districts collaborating and doing the good work and working to meet the best needs of this, of the students without, um, that particular sweeping pending legislation.
Jessica, what's the timeline on?
Um, I think our decision would be is like, we would explore this with them, that we'd consider. Um, they themselves, um, are in exploratory stages. Um, they had some facilities, um, projects they're needing to do. Um, you know, if you followed their board too, there was conversations at one point combining with Plainfield. Um, so I think they're in that exploratory phase, and I think they would just wanna know what their options are.
Not immediate at all. I talked to, or did, after we got this, I did reach out to, uh, a member of their board just to clarify because there was not a lot of information in the, um, communication that we got. There was some, I just had more questions. Um, and, uh, like, like Amy said, they are, this would not be immediate. They don't anticipate this being immediate because they are doing a lot of exploring in a lot of other areas as well, and they're trying to decide if they can actually renovate their building. There's a whole bunch of things they're trying to decide, but they wanted to have a complete picture. Is this even a possibility? If it would be, what would it look like in the most broad of terms or in the most specific of terms, whatever we wanna give them? So, up to us.
Well, that, that's helpful to understand. I, I, I feel, I feel real deer in headlights about this. I don't know about others. Like, I think, not to, that's not like trying to place blame on anybody, but I'm just like, seems to me like the area agreement is a long, like, that's something that's had, it's worked out for a long period of time. We have a lot of data about it. We have a lot of information about costs. Like, we've worked it into our systems. Like, it's a very well-integrated situation, and I just, the idea of kind of quickly trying to give a reaction to the idea of absorbing another, like, it just, it, it doesn't feel great, especially in the context that we're talking about in terms of open enrollment questions sort of statewide. Like, I think it just, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about like the conversation getting ahead of itself in terms of like, if we give them an answer, if we just say like, well, here's what we think the cost would, it's sort of, I, I'm not saying that you would in that conversation say, and therefore it's fine. You can just say, yeah, like, I understand that's not how it happened, but I am, I do feel concerned that we could sort of get out of our skis in the conversation and sort of talking about how much it's costing before we talk about whether it's a good idea and all the other ways. And so I guess like.
I think, I think we have to do it at the same time, right? 'Cause I think we can't talk about whether something is a good idea if we don't know how much it costs. It's our chicken and egg, right? We have to do both of those things together. So I think that's what we're starting at.
And I'm not like, this is not a, this is not a, I'm mad, this is coming up this way. It's a just sort of like, oh, God, like, uh, we're looking at, we're looking at numbers, and that's great. I love numbers, but there's a lot other than numbers involved in this. And I just feel like we're gonna need some time to like suss that out. And I think that, um, it's hard for me to react to numbers, particularly in the absence of all that other conversation. I haven't thought about this at all. Like, we haven't, not, so that's my initial reaction to all of this. It's like, dunno.
I think there is a sensibility in the fact that if Cornish is already a school choice district where we do receive students, exploring this with them as partners, um, and as they explore and the simultaneous numbers in theory thing makes sense. Can you expand on the potentials of revenue here if there's also a potential of, we'll need to accommodate with also hiring more?
Sure. So, um, basically on this paper here, this is what we would send to them if the board approved him, um, did this. This would be, next year, let's say they send their fifth through eighth graders, um, based on this year's rate. So it's gonna be a little bit more 'cause our rates go up everywhere. It would be, um, they would send us 1 million, roughly a million dollars. Now, if we had to hire two teachers, we would take that off, which would be roughly. Now, if we had to hire two teachers, we would take that off, which would be roughly 120,000, right? And then there's curricular costs, right, for there. One of the other things too, although they would still remain a choice district for high school, we may assume that these students have been attending middle school with us for four years, then we may gain these students at high school. Tim, I think we, it kind of waivers depending how many students come from Cornish. One of the things that, students that go, come from Cornish do have to transport themselves here. So if we don't have them coming, it's usually because of transportation, and they go to another anchor school, typically Windsor. Some choose to go, I think, to Hanover as well.
Do we have any, I understand you've got numbers of students, but I'm not actually familiar with the current enrollment numbers of the school, the number of classes. What kind of effect would this have on the class sizes?
So based, I know we had our report last year. We are looking at, I was looking at projections already for budgeting next year. And so we have currently that fifth grade bubble moving up to sixth grade. We potentially, and they're right on the cusp of our class sizes. So we-
Is that why you'd have to-
Would add that one there, and then we would definitely need one in the other one.
So in theory, this could reduce class sizes while paying for itself?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's difficult, because we, and we have from our enrollment study, and I'm sorry I didn't bring the whole one again, like, we projected from Grantham to Plainfield too. That was part of our enrollment piece too. So it gets a little tricky.
Dicey, yeah.
A little with middle, and you know, and seventh and eighth, and John can attest, we have algebra classes. It's not just like, everybody's in that same class when you get up to that seventh and eighth grade level. So depending on where that student is academically, you know, for that piece. You know, if, there should be revenue to us for sure. We would have to work out those specific numbers when you look at the exact points of like curriculum and stuff, stuff like that.
Devils in the details, kind of thing.
Yeah.
Tim, do you, just off the top of your head, and you don't have to know this, but about, on average, how many students?
Yeah, we, a good average is eight per grade.
Okay. So-
I was surprised these numbers are bigger, but they do have a few more students, like, their enrollment there has gone.
And you can see, yeah, from their enrollment projections.
I would also assume that if they are coming in earlier, that we'd probably have an increase in the high school students that choose Lebanon.
Right, right.
Because their friends are there too.
But like, looking at their seventh grade, if they've got 12 kids and we get an average of eight, it's really-
Not that much of an increase, yeah.
They all pay, it would be like four more kids, right? Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So what's the action here? It's whether we choose to continue having this conversation, or we just tell them no?
Your action would be is that you're willing to have the conversation, and you're allowing me to send these rates from there. So obviously, you know, if we were to do this, there's-
Bunch of questions.
Bunch of questions, legal, right, area, and things like that too.
So it's either no or keep having the conversation?
It's either kind of shutting the door and say Lebanon's not an option, or it's like, we're definitely willing to explore with them and hear about their timelines too, so.
So is that the motion?
You can make a motion.
I move that we authorize Amy to continue the conversation.
I second.
Okay, so a move by Richard, second by Leila, additional discussion? I think we heard, have to. Okay.
There's nothing binding about having a conversation.
No, nothing binding about having a conversation.
No, but I think like, as you have that, if we do authorize you to have that conversation, I feel like it's under, you, it sounds like you're very clear that it's a, a real-
It's a conversation.
Preliminary, real-
Right, and I think at, you know, at points moving forward, we'd want joint boards to come together and have those conversations. It certainly wouldn't just be signing a contract and moving forward, so.
And I think that, so just as action items, within that, I think getting the numbers, the complete LMS numbers would be helpful with Grantham, what that would look like with this kind of addition. And then thinking about, which is not going to be dramatic, but a slight increase at the high school as well, just sort of.
Sure, I can, as I work with, they're, like I said, I think they are in the very infancy stages of looking at partner districts and options themselves. They may choose not to move forward with anything like that too, so.
Joe, oh, go, sorry, Joe, were you going to say something? Sorry, okay.
One of the things I'm thinking about is just that like, the, it seems to me that the, the more additional sort of towns that we consider having these agreements with, I guess, like, what's coming into my head is that it sort of multiplies the possible variance in enrollment projections, because if, and I'm just trying to think through this, I have it, like, if Cornish builds a huge development, just in a hilarious turn of events, let's say that that happens, and Plainfield builds a huge development in another hilarious turn of events.
I don't think they have plan to develop in Plainfield.
You know, the world's a weird, changing place, and it can happen.
What?
Yeah, but there, but the state is also looking at taking away their ability to refuse that kind of thing. So I think that like, there is, there are changes afoot in terms of how that stuff happens. And I just, I'm thinking about the fact that like, the area agreement has been very stable, because, and we have an ability to project, like, we understand, like, projections, enrollments have been sort of like low and steady. And I just, the more towns we add in, Cornish, I'm not really worried about, it's a pretty small town, but like, that, it's just another place where if there was a population bump, we could see ourselves in a position of, maybe we'll still be taking in more tuition though. So it's like-
Do these, you said, you said these agreements supersede?
That is what, on our last, legal, but I said, I'm not sure what the legislation is-
So if that holds, is it possible this could actually stabilize our numbers in the face of that? Because we'd say our spots are full, we have these agreements.
I think that when you consider a lot of the shifts in the state that include what Ash just mentioned, including also that there have been soft talks about even limiting the number of SAUs is something that's coming up in the news. The idea of being able to, I control that this is already a partner, let's continue talking, is extremely attractive.
I, right before Ash had his light, bold moment, oh, one thing we might want to think about with the, our area agreements in the past, ten-year, and that might be something we want to investigate, change length of those as we add more. That makes us a little bit more nimble in the face of- Ten-year agreements are great, but just going along with what Jessica was just saying, if Grantham decided to have a brand-new development, or Plain, you know, any of these other places, this is always something that we have run into, and we are, a ten-year agreement is a great thing, it's very stabilizing, but it might be something we want to think about, is, is something we want to revisit more often.
Especially because a very large development usually has a five-year times, time horizon?
Exactly, so you have a little bit of chance. It's just more work, but it, it is a, just something to think about.
And I can give you guys the square footage for actually space in this building, when it was built, for how many students. I know the high school in years past was considerably larger, full of students, but-
When we were applying for building aid, the design capacity we found was like 650, seems, heavy work.
All right, so we have a motion to proceed with the conversation that Ash did and Leila seconded. All those in favor proceeding? Great, unanimous, great, thank you. Okay. Now, here, moving on, exciting, to our proposed resolutions for the NHSBA delegate assembly. So we have had a slight complication in that they have moved their assembly from their original date to the 25th of October, which means the two people who had volunteered to be our representative and alternate can no longer attend, because those are days that they are not able to go, that is, which is fine. So now we need to do two things, three things tonight. One, we need to appoint a new alternate and primary delegate to go on the 25th. Two, we need to decide what our positions are on all of these resolutions, so that the delegates can vote on our behalf. And three, we need to authorize our delegates to be able to act on our behalf if there are potential amendments or changes, as long as they feel like they understand the will of the board and be able to do so. So we do those three things. So first, the 25th of October at 10:30 a.m. is the new date. Who among us is available on this day to go to Concord for what is usually several hours? And there's lunch and breakfast too. So I can go.
Nominate Lil to go.
Right, that's fine, that's only one person, though, we need two. Anyone else?
I have a violent commitment.
That's fine. I appreciate that, thank you. Joe can't do it, okay? All right, John can't do it. Kevin? Jessica? Jessica can't do it?
I can't be a delegate.
I know, you can't be a delegate.
I was like, can I go?
I wish.
Can you vote me in for a delegate's day?
That would be great. I mean, it's, we don't have to, I mean, it's fine, anyway. Kevin?
I mean-
I'll look into it.
Okay, that's great. I for sure can, so unless I get scurvy or something, I can do it. So then, we need to decide what is happening for our, what we think. So we're going to do this, we're just going to go straight through them. And if you have, what I basically would like from you is a vote yes or vote no on this. If you have additional questions or concerns, or you like this but you don't like this, just tell me, so that we can kind of run through this. Okay, so the first is the proposed resolution from the Hanoverian Dress and School Boards about to not support open enrollment. And the New Hampshire School Board recommends alternate, alternate language, an alternative resolution, which is just simpler. What are your thoughts?
I'm in favor of the alternate resolution in HSBA recommended.
Okay, so we support, is that everyone?
Yes.
Yes, 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 great, okay, perfect. That makes the next two easier, because 14 and 15 are exactly the same. So we support the alternate language for all three, hooray. Moving on to 16, this is from Chesterfield, and we say that they propose the NHAs, NHSBAs, sorry, that the state fully fund all state public education aid formulas before funding any other state obligation. Once again, the NHSBA Board supports an alternative resolution, which is adding language to a current resolution, because I think it's an important change. Thoughts?
I think the NHSBA's alternate resolution is also appropriate.
Okay, so yes, we support the alternate resolution?
Yes.
Great. 17, this is from Chesterfield as well. The resolution is that they oppose the inclusion of amendments to proposed bills that are not germane to the subject matter of the proposed bill. NHSBA does not support this. They appreciate the intent, but they don't support it because non-german amendments are sometimes things that we want, because a non-german amendment ends, ends up supporting schools, and they don't want to eliminate all non-german agreement, amendments. So what say you?
I agree with not supporting the risk of this proposal.
Okay, not support?
I hate non-german resolutions.
I know, so do I, but I like their rationale, so.
But the rationale holds.
Okay, great. 18, this is from Raymond School Board, that all schools shall receive state and/or federal funding, that they'll comply with all applicable state and federal laws regarding testing, hiring, practice, and special education inclusion. New Hampshire School Board Association does not support this, because they have said that they have already, they already oppose vouchers, and they don't want their, that if they support this, then it makes their voucher opposition seem less strong. For that reason, I like that idea of not supporting it, but what did the rest of you say?
I, I agree with not supporting that rationale.
Okay, perfect. 19, this is from Raymond School Board also. This is talking about infrastructure, and they want to strengthen the school building aid program by adding $60 million annually with a schedule increase every two years. Okay, NHSBA does not support this, but they do not support it because they feel like they already have two existing resolutions that address this topic, which are there, as you can see them. What do you say?
Jessica shrugs. I, I agree with not supporting, numbers can be really, I understand that Raymond School Board is trying to specificity, but that may not be-
Okay.
I agree. So support NHSBAs.
Though not support.
Recommendation to not support it.
Okay, thanks.
Wow.
Okay.
Really had to put it that way.
Okay, 20, Concord School Board. This is advocating for the New Hampshire Legislature to create a universal subsidized meal program for New Hampshire public school students. NHSBA does not support this.
Because it already supports the same thing.
It already supports it, yes, so.
Go with NHSBAs.
So go with NHSBA, okay, so, nope. All right, 21, Concord.
Do we, can I, can I just bring up these things with the Concord School Board? I don't know if we want to have a conversation around if there is some sort of updated amendments proposed. How do we feel about generally supporting free lunches and gun-
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. So let's go back to 20 real quick. So this is universal and/or subsidized meal program, so free lunches, free school lunches. It's entirely possible that they will change this, this language dramatically. So I guess the question is, what does this board think about universal free lunches?
Universal free school lunches are good.
Very good.
Yeah, I support.
Yeah, okay, so we support free lunches. So anything that supports free lunches, we're okay with.
I know, I'm taking a really controversial stance by saying that.
That's fine. No, but I mean, the things that stay in line with, we support free lunches.
I will trust the board members to, that are there, to, you know, use their judgment on-
Right. You're going to vote to do that in just a minute. Okay.
I'm just saying.
We're going to make that official in just a second. All right, Concord School Board, number 21. This is about gun, the Federal Gun Free School Act, that the New Hampshire State Legislature will enforce the Federal Gun Free School Act. And New Hampshire School Board Association not support this, because, and they're not supporting this as an interesting, not reason. Their reason is, we did this last year, nobody liked it. It was, it was rescinded, it was withdrawn, so no one recommended it, and no one voted on it, and there were no amendments that received a majority of vote. And since the delegates did not support this last year, they don't believe they're going to support it again this year.
I, if I'm remembering correctly, we disagreed with the majority last year. We did want gun control, and, and, and so disagree.
So, so we do have the, so I guess the question is, do we think that the resolutions that already exist, do, do they say what we want them to say? So I guess that's the, like, do we think that these resolutions, I and G, are saying what we want them to say?
I'm really concerned about what federal firearm laws are going to become.
I agree.
I don't think we can say, I'm sorry, I don't know if I can give opinion, but I don't think we can say it enough.
I, I think, I think the problem with the current resolutions is that they don't take a stance.
Yeah.
They, they don't take a stance, and there are potentially going to be some representatives there that are also concerned that this is just so outdated anyway, that there may be those amendments to these resolutions anyway.
So then that becomes the question for us then, is, sorry?
No, no, it's fine.
The question for us is, what, if things get brought up, how do we feel about the federal, about how do we feel about enforcing the Federal Gun Free School Zone Act in general?
I think I agree with repeating it loud and often is helpful, and I-
So yes, we support that.
Yeah, and then additionally, because it was even coming up in the legislature about like, requiring schools to do the gun training that came up with this board. So I think, I think that's why it makes sense to kind of repeat it at this time, that this is a gun-free act and that she goes through somewhere else.
Are we saying that we support this resolution? 21.
Yes.
Yes.
I like their paragraph down at the end, that they're as the gun-free school, that's the-
Yeah, I agree.
Resolution, the other stuff, it doesn't even, Concord's-
Right, right.
But I also, but I also agree with the resolutions that exist and the proposed.
Yeah, I, I think we voted in favor of-
Of that proposed resolution, okay. All right, so it may come up again.
So again this year.
Okay, perfect, I am voting yes on all of those things. Okay, 22, Huxett. The NHSBA will legislate, will advocate for legislation to amend current statutes to allow a simple majority, 50 plus, 50% plus one vote as a threshold for approval of- of school infrastructure projects, because right now it is, correct?
60%.
60%. Okay. And they support alternate resolution, which is legislation that would allow for lower voter slash legislative body thresholds to approve bonds, essentially the same thing. They just needed, okay. So they agree with that. They just have very small language change.
I like their new language.
Yeah. So do I. It's clear. So we support this? Yes? Okay. Great. Right. Hookset again. This is about funding the Catastrophic Special Education Fund, and they, New Hampshire School Board does not support this because we have numerous resolutions that speak to funding, and they list them here, like five of them.
We really, 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 really want to stress how much we need funding.
Right.
And they are outdated. Some of them going back to 94.
Yeah. 94, 98.
I think if there's, if, 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 if it's brought up that they could be updated.
Okay.
I would be in favor of updating some of these to the, like, the modern reality.
And current RSA.
Updating would be fine and not necessarily pigeonholing into just a drop in special fund, but more general, special.
Yeah. 2A is still very pertinent, even though it's from 94. The state fully fund all state education aid formulas before funding any other state obligation.
Okay.
Pay your schools first.
So, so we, so we do not support this resolution, but we support the rationale for NHSBA and all of those.
Yeah. And, and if it comes up in conversation, updating them.
Yeah. Updating. Okay. Got that. 24. Manadnok. This is to allow people with disabilities or caring for disabilities to be counted as in-person for the purposes of a quorum. Like the worst written, all of these. And they support alternative resolution, which I'll bet they do, to say that they allow, this is for the remote participation. So they're saying, obviously, this, but the, obviously, these people have to be remote if they're doing these things, and they don't specify that it has to be disability, which I think is probably better. But what did the rest of you all say?
Agreed.
Yeah.
The fact that they rolled it back after the end of the pandemic was.
Yeah.
Ridiculous to.
So we like it to be, we like it that doesn't just refer to disabilities as well.
Yeah.
That seems.
Yeah. I like, I like their amendments. And that's the last one?
Oh, last one.
Continuing. We're going to do.
No. We, I mean, they don't change them.
They don't change, so we just maintain what we support last year.
Yeah. Okay. So then the last thing we have to do for this is you all have to vote to authorize me to act on your behalf. My best judgment on the fly.
So moved.
Hey. Thank you.
Do you want me to, do you want me to say, word it out?
No. That's fine.
I, I move that the board authorizes Lillian Mon to vote in the manner that we have just discussed, and also to act on her own recognizance in matters.
Oh, great. That's even better. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by John. All right. Although, any additional discussion? No. All those in favor? Okay. Great. Thank you all very much. We'll see how it goes. Okay. We need to act on our donation of $20,000. Need discussion, action on the donation for Model UN.
I'll make a motion that we approve the donation of $20,000 from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for the LHS Model UN feat.
I second that motion.
Okay. And I would like to say, on behalf of the board, again, we always, as always, are grateful to the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for their continued generosity, without which many programs would not be happening, which we appreciate. On a personal level, my child has done this, and will be doing it again this year, and it has been a pivotal experience for him that made a lot of college decision-making lots, lots easier. So I appreciate that on a personal level. We're going to go ahead and vote on this to accept the, approve the donation. All those in favor? Great. Unanimous. Thank you. And we're so close. Policy. First reading. Oh, shoot.
It's a quick one, folks. We've got a minor amendment to AB. That's the New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights. There was just a little bit of a confusion between the number of days a request had to be filled in after, but the language of the statute was 14 days, not 10 business days. So we're just going to change it to the language of the statute, even though the language of the new Bill of Rights thing, anyway. 14 days is clearer.
Okay. Great.
GBEBD is more of an update about employee use of social networking. Basically, we're just updating it to say that staff should not be subscribed to the social media accounts of students.
Yes.
And if they are already subscribed to the social media accounts of students, when those students come to their school, they should unsubscribe until they are no longer their.
I think we put a provision unless they are a relative of the student.
Yeah. If they're a relative, they're, that's, that's different. And then the last one in BEDG is meeting minutes. There was some legislation that came through, and now minutes have to state the name of the person who produced or prepared the minutes and the start and end times of the meeting. I believe we were already doing the, both of those.
We were already doing the start and end times, and sometimes we were doing the name of the person. So just whoever's doing minutes, we just have to make sure that we have the name of the person on it, as well as the start and end times.
And so that comes with a, a basic committee meeting minutes template, which should hopefully standardize our, our minute-taking processes, but realistically, I, I think.
Doesn't matter.
I think we hope to move all this stuff into diligent anyway.
Yes. Eventually, it will all go away.
And if this passes next meeting, I'll send the template that we have for those committees that are not yet on diligent, and then I plan to meet with all the secretaries of the subcommittees to talk about diligent.
So can I get a motion to send AB, GBEBD, and BEDG to?
Don't you normally make that motion?
I, I, I move that, that we, we move AB, GBEBD, and BEDG to second reading.
I'll second.
A motion by Ash, second by John. Any additional discussion? All right. All those in favor? Excellent.
And we marked one policy as reviewed, JICL-R. It was named strangely. We've run it through tech.
Yeah.
Accurate.
They've got weird stuff in it.
Yep. Apparently it's accurate.
It was reviewed by our Director of IT.
Okay. But it just said, it has some things that.
Like what?
Like it says, getting, transferring, accessing, storing, blah, 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 reporting that contains pornography, nudity, obscenity, language, or sexually, is language.
Okay.
It just says language.
You never heard your mom say, "language"?
But it says profanity.
Yeah. So where, and what paragraph is that in?
That's, page 91, bullet two. There was also a weird thing in there. Like, I, I went through a quick book, also specified, like, electronic and/or internet-based. Now two separate things. Now we have electronic, non-internet.
You know what? Maybe, maybe it's time to just update some of the language in this.
That's fine.
I don't actually, it's not, I just, like, there's a, there was a lot of.
If you can make a motion to send it to Policy Committee, I will make sure.
Just make a motion to send it to Policy.
I make a motion to send GICL-R to Policy Committee for.
Update.
Modernization.
Good.
No problem.
Okay. All right. Motion, motion by, motion by Ash, second by Jessica. All, any additional discussion? Okay. Good. All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. We reopen public comment. There is no public comment in the room. Is there any online?
If you're online and would like to make a public, please raise your hand. There's no public comment online.
Okay. So we'll close public comment again. Updates. Finance and Facilities could not meet on September 16th because of lack of quorums. The next meeting is to be determined. Thank you. Policy Committee met on September 8th. We've discussed mostly all of this. And the next meeting is October 6th at 8:15 a.m. EC met on September 11th.
We did. And we have the minutes in here that you can review. I think the big piece is we are continuing to monitor the, the 306s and remain in compliance. Anything else you think is pertinent?
No. That's good. Okay. PNN, Personal Negotiations, met on September 10th. The next meeting is on September 1/23rd. I think you're going to have an update in non-public. We'll see. Oh. Sorry. That's a pre, that, nah, the.
30th.
Okay. 9:30. What time?
30th at 2:00.
Great. Thank you.
And it's a non-meeting.
It's a non-meeting.
Oh, a non-meet. Okay. For having a non-meet. All right. SWAC met on September 4th. The next meeting is Thursday, December 4th at 8:30 a.m. HCTC's next meeting is October 1st at 12:00 p.m. And HCTC Area's next meeting is October 21st at Plainfield Elementary School. The school district, so this meeting, that we're joint meeting that we're having is taking the place of the School District City Task Force, and that is on October 5:30 at City Hall.
I suspect I will not be able to attend that, but I am checking.
I believe there is a Teams link.
It's a childcare.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. It's taking the place of the School District City Task Force meeting. You're meeting with the full city council in place of having our task force.
Both boards.
Both, both, both the board and the school, the school, city council are meeting together on the 1st.
5:30?
At 5:30. You got it. There should be in your email, like, an invitation for that today. Yeah. And then the Housing Task Force met on September 15th.
I actually wasn't in attendance, and I haven't seen the notes yet.
Okay.
I presented.
Okay. Great.
About, about the Environmental Justice Task Force.
Oh, okay.
Report.
Good. All right. The next meeting is October 20th at 8:15 a.m. Future agenda items, or my recommendations or questions? Any? None? No? Okay. Next school board meeting is October 8th. Well, our actual next meeting is October 1st at 5:30 at City Hall. Then our next full regular board meeting is October 8th at 6:30. Not at the SAU. At LMS. Okay. Here. We are going to go into non-public. I know you were all excited, but we're going to go into non-public. We need a roll call vote for that. Kevin? Oh, sorry. We need to make a motion. Ha, ha, ha. There's no motion.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public session, to discuss matters as per RSA 91A3 2A.
Okay. I need a second.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor? Kevin?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Joe?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay. We are going into non-public at 8:51 p.m. Our minute ticker.
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay, we are going into non-public at 8:51 p.m. Love it, love it. Okay, where is everybody? Come on, I can't. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order at 9:08 p.m. And we have no other items of business or other business.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, Jessica moves we adjourn, second by Ash. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. And the meeting is adjourned at 9:08.